Hello and welcome to study session seven of daily memory lab. In today's session, we will revise. E-way bill page number nine to page number fifteen, we will be doing round three. And after that, we will be studying supply under GST. We will start from page number eleven and we will proceed till page number fifteen or page number sixteen depending on the time availability. So before we actually get into the session, let us set the intention. Now I am going to study for thirty to sixty minutes with full focus. In this study session, I lower down all my expectations and embrace imperfection. I may or may not get big breakthroughs in this study session and I am totally okay with it. I will most likely make mistakes in the next thirty to sixty minutes and if I make them, I am not going to judge myself. I embrace my mistakes and reset my ambitions. My goal is not to achieve perfection, my goal is only to make a tiny bit of progress. In the next thirty to sixty minutes. Now that intention is set, let us start our preparation for the day. Page number twelve point uh from this half of twelve point eight and we will proceed. Special situation or situations where E-way bill needs to be issued even if. Value of consignment is less than fifty thousand. So this is a special situation where. Interstate transfer of handicraft goods by a person exempted from obtaining registration. Where handicraft goods are transported from one state or union territory to another state or union territory by a person. Who has been exempted from requirement of obtaining registration under clauses one and two of section twenty four. The E-way bill shall be generated by the said person irrespective of the value of consignment fourth proviso to rule one thirty eight. So they have defined handicraft goods, these are goods specified in notification number fifty six slash two thousand eighteen C T. Dated twenty three ten two thousand eighteen which exempts the casual taxable persons. Making interstate taxable supplies of such handicraft goods from obtaining registrations up to specified. Turnover more details in chapter nine anyway. Let's move on to the next topic. E-way bill in case of build to ship to model. In a build to ship to model of supply, there are three persons involved in a transaction namely. A, the person who has ordered B to send goods directly to C. B is the person who is sending goods directly to C on behalf of A. C is the recipient of goods. In this complete scenario, two supplies are involved. And accordingly, two tax invoices are required to be issued. Invoice number one which would be issued by B to A because. A has actually made the payment to B and A has ordered B to deliver it to C. So B would have. Charged invoice against A and since A is the one making payment to B. A will also want to recover this money from C therefore A will issue another invoice to C. So this is the second invoice which would be issued by A to C. It is clarified that as per the C S CGST rule, for the movement of goods which is taking from B to C. On behalf of A, either A or B can generate E-way bill. But it may be noted that only one E-way bill is required to be generated, press release date at twenty three April two thousand eighteen. So even though there are two invoices, even though there are two supplies, the E-way bill count with just only one that is required. Okay, let's go to second subdivision. Information to be furnished in E-way bill. An E-way bill form G E GST E W B one contains two parts. Part A comprising of details of GST I N of supplier and recipient, place of delivery, document number. And date, value of goods HSN code and reasons for transportation. To be furnished by the registered person who is causing the movement of goods of consignment value exceeding fifty thousand. Part B comprises of the transport details. So transport document number that is. Goods receipt number or railway receipt number or airway bill number or bill of leading number. And vehicle number in case of transport by road to be furnished by the person who is transporting the goods. Part A is done by the person who is causing the movement of the goods. Part B is to be filled by the person who is transporting the goods. Okay. However, information in part A may be furnished by the transporter on an authorization received from such. Registered person first proviso to rule number one thirty eight sub rule one. Or by the e-commerce operator or courier agency where the goods to be transported. Or supplied through such an e-commerce operator or a courier agency on an authorization received from the consignor. So sometimes part A can also be furnished by the transporter or the courier agency or the e-commerce operator provided the. Consignor has provided authorization for such uh job. Okay, once the consignor or consignee enters all the details in part A of the E-way bill. A part A slip is generated which contains a temporary number. This slip can be shared with the transporter or used by the supplier himself. Later to enter the details in part B of E-way bill and generate the E-way bill. This will be useful when supplier has prepared invoice relating to his business transaction but does not have. Transportation details thus he can enter invoice details in part A of E-way bill. And keep it ready for entering details of mode of transportation in part B of E-way bill. Okay. Once the goods are ready for movement from the business premises and transportation details are are known. The user can enter the part B details and generate the E-way bill for movement of goods. E-way bill can be generated only after entering the details of part B. Okay. Let's go to third subdivision. Who is mandatorily required to generate E-way bill? E-way bill is to be generated by the consignor or consignee himself if the transportation is being done in own or hired conveyance. Or by railways, by air or by vessel. If the goods are handed over to a transporter for transportation by road, E-way bill is to be generated by the transporter. Where neither the consignor nor consignee generates the E-way bill. And the value of goods is more than fifty thousand, it shall be the responsibility of the transporter to generate it. This has been explained in detail below. Where the goods are transported by a registered person whether as consignor or recipient as the consignee. Whether in his own conveyance or a hired one or a public conveyance by road. The said person shall have to generate the E-way bill by furnishing information in part B. On on the common portal rule one thirty eight sub rule two. Where the E-way bill is not generated by a registered person and the goods are handed over to the transporter for transportation of goods by road. The registered person shall furnish information relating to the transporter in part B. On the common portal and the E-way bill shall be generated by the transporter. On the said portal on the basis of information furnished by the registered person in part A. Okay, where the goods are transported by railways or by air or by vessel. The E-way bill shall be generated by the registered person. Being the supplier or the recipient who shall either before or after commencement of movement. Furnish information in part B via uh transport document number. Goods receipt number or railway receipt number or airway bill number or bill of leading number on the common portal rule one thirty eight ru uh sub rule two A. Now other important points where the goods are transported by railways, there is no requirement to carry E-way bill along with the goods. But railways has to carry invoice or delivery chalan or bill of supply as the case may be along with goods. Further, E-way bill generated for the movement of goods is required to be produced at the time of delivery of goods. Railways shall not deliver unless the E-way bill E-way bill required. Under rules is produced at the time of delivery proviso to rule one thirty eight to A. The registered person or the transporter may at his option generate and carry the E-way bill. Even if the value of consignment is less than fifty thousand. So this option is provided. We can voluntarily generate E-way bill if we like it. Government is not stopping us. Where the movement is caused by an unregistered person either in his own conveyance or a hired one or through a transporter. He or the transporter at may at their option generate the E-way bill second proviso to rule one thirty eight three. Where the goods are supplied by an unregistered supplier to a recipient who is registered. The movement shall be said to be caused by such recipient if the recipient is known at the time of commencement of the. Movement of goods explanation one to rule one thirty eight three. Next, fourth subdivision. When is it not mandatory to furnish the details of conveyance in part B? E-way bill is valid for movement of goods by road only when the information in part B is furnished. So this is the basic premise. What are the exceptions to it? However, details of conveyance may not be furnished in part B of the E-way bill. Where the goods are transported for a distance of up to fifty kilometer within the state or union territory. If you are doing. Within the state, within the union territory, if you are within the same jurisdiction and if you are going to travel only within fifty kilometers. Then you don't have to fill part B. Which is from the place of business of the consignor to the place of business of the transporter for further transportation. Or from the place of business of the transporter finally to the place of business of the consignee. In either of the links, if the distance is only for fifty kilometers, then you don't have to generate part B of E-way bill. Okay, next unique E-way bill number. Upon generation of the E-way bill on the common portal, a unique E-way bill number shall be made available to the supplier, the recipient. And the transporter on the common portal. One number for all three parties, but it will be a unique number. Okay. Sixth point, transfer of goods from one conveyance to another. So this is what we saw. Transportment model and multiple modes of transportation model. Let us read them one by one. Okay. Where the goods are transferred from one conveyance to another. The consignor or the recipient who has provided information in part A or the transporter shall. Before such a transfer and further movement of goods, update the details of conveyance in part B of the E-way bill on the common portal. So if I am moving goods from one conveyance to another before uh like okay, let's say I have transferred goods from. Vehicle A to vehicle B, but before I commence the journey and before I commence the movement of vehicle B. I should have updated part B of the E-way bill about the new vehicles details. Consignment of ru consignment of goods may be required to be transferred from one. Transferred from the original conveyance due to unforeseen unforeseen exigencies like breakdown of the vehicle. In such a case, the transporter transferring goods from one conveyance to another in the course of transit. Shall before such transfer and further movement of goods, update the details of the conveyance. This is also. Just what we saw. Any reason we may transfer goods from own conveyance to another provide now that you transfer the goods actually. Before you move the goods in the second vehicle, just update the part B. In some cases, consignments are transported by the transporter through transshipment using multiple devices, same mode of transportation. For carrying the same consignment before it is delivered to the recipient at the place of destination hence for each movement of. Uh hence for each such movement from one place to another. The transporter needs to update the vehicle number in which he is transporting that consignment in part B of the E-way bill. Fine, no matter how many times I transfer, like sometimes you send goods from South India and it has to go till Delhi. The the consignment will change, the shipment will change, like three to four times stage by stage they will keep on. Uh you know, loading and unloading goods and you know they will accumulate zone wise uh. Goods that are being transported. So there are there will be lots of sorting and resorting that will happen. So every time that such sorting and resorting happens. They will have to transport the goods to an entirely new vehicle. So this is called transshipment using multiple vehicles. So every time you transship. And you load the goods into a new vehicle, you have to update part B of the E-way bill. The user can update part B as many times as he wants for movements of goods to the destination. However, the updating should be done within the validity period. There can also be a case where one E-way bill can go through multiple modes of transportation before reaching destination. So it's not just. Same mode of transportation, multiple vehicles, it can also apply to multiple modes of transportation. So previous example, we saw movement of goods only by road, but the vehicle num vehicles keep changing, vehicles kept changing. But in this case, I will even transfer goods from one mode to another. First I will transfer through road, then I will transfer it to a ship. Then from there I will transfer it to uh again road, then it will go to uh you know be transported through a through an airplane. So all sorts of things like that. So every time as per mode of transportation, the E W P can be updated with new mode of transportation. Using the option of update vehicle number. So let's read example number two. Bubble associates is moving the goods from Kuchin to Chandigarh through road, ship, air and road again. First bubble associates generate generates the E-way bill by entering first stage of movement. That is by road from its place to uh uh to shipyard and enters the vehicle number. So this is first leg of the transport. Then it it will submit the goods to shipyard and update the mode of transportation as ship. And the transport document number on the E-way bill system. So this is the second leg which is. From road, it is being transported into a ship. After reaching Mumbai, bubble associates. Or concerned transporter updates movement as road from shipyard to airport with vehicle number. Thereafter, bubble associates or transporter updates using update vehicle number option on the portal, the airway bill number. So third leg of the journey is the goods are being transported through air. So that also they will update. And after reaching Delhi, so this is the last leg of the journey, the goods are being transported back to road, movement through road. This way, the E-way bill will be updated with multiple modes of transportation. This is a pretty simple subsegment. Anyway, let's move on. Assigning the E-way bill number to another transporter. The consignor or recipient who has furnished the information in part A or the transporter may assign the E-way bill number. To another registered or enrolled transporter for updating the information in part B. For further movement of the consignment. However, once the details of the conveyance has been. Uh once the details have been updated by the transporter in part B, the consignor or recipient as the case may be who has furnished. The information in part A shall not be allowed to assign the E-way bill number to another transporter. Proviso to rule one thirty eight five A. Okay, third example. A consignor is required to move goods from city X to city Z. He appoints transporter A for movement of his goods. Transporter A moves goods from city X to city Y. For completing the movement of goods from city Y to city Z. Transporter A now hands over goods to transporter B. So it's not just that I am. Changing the mode of transport or I am changing the vehicle number. I am shifting the goods. To and then giving handing over the goods to an entirely new transporter for the next leg of the journey. So from transporter A, the goods are getting moved to transporter B thereafter. The goods are moved to the destination from city Y to city Z by transporter B. In such a scenario, only one E-way bill would be required. So even though the goods are being handed over from transporter A to transporter B. I don't need to. I don't need to update, I don't need to generate a new E-way bill, only one E-way bill will be required. Part A can be filled in by the consignor and then the E-way bill will be assigned by consignor to transporter A. Transporter A will fill the vehicle details, everything in part B and move goods from city X to city Y. On reaching city Y, transporter A will assign the said E-way bill to transporter B. So part B. Will be reassigned by transporter A to transporter B. Therefore, transporter B will be able to update the goods, update the details of part B. Transporter B will fill the details of his vehicle and move the goods from city Y to city Z. Okay, now. Let us go to the next subsegment which is sub segment number seven consolidated E-way bill. After E-way bill has been generated, where multiple consignments are intended to be transported in one conveyance. The transporter may indicate the serial number of E-way bills generated in respect of each such consignment. Electronically on the common portal and consolidated E-way bill in form GST E W B zero two may be generated by him. On the said common portal prior to the movement of goods. So this is like an administrative convenience if I have like multiple shipments. Uh in the same vehicle, I can generate a consolidated E-way bill so that I can have a. Control I have I can have better control and I can carry less paperwork. Okay. Consolidated E-way bill is a document containing the multiple E-way bills for multiple consignments being carried in one conveyance. That is, the transporter carrying multiple consignments of various consignors and consignees in a single vehicle. So the vehicle has to be one to generate a consolidated E-way bill. Transporter carrying multiple consignments of various consignors and consignees in a single vehicle can generate and carry a single document called. Consolidated E-way bill instead of carrying separate document for each consignment in a conveyance. Consolidated E-way bill is a is like a trip sheet and it contains details of different E-way bills. In respect of various consignments being transported in one vehicle and these E-way bills will have different validity periods. Hence consolidated E-way bill does not have an independent validity period. Okay, further, individual consignment specified in the consolidated E-way bill should reach the destination as per the validity period of. The individual E E-way bill. Further, where the consignor or consignee has not generated the E-way bill in form GST E W B one. And the aggregate of the consignment value of goods carried in the conveyance is more than fifty thousand. The transporter, except in case of transportation of goods by railways, air or vessel. Shall in respect of interstate supply, generate the E-way bill in form GST one. On the basis of invoice or bill of supply or delivery chalan as the case may be and may also generate a consolidated E-way bill. On the common portal prior to the movement of goods. The generation of form GST E W B zero two is optional and not mandatory. However, where the goods to be transported are supplied through an e-commerce operator or a courier agency. The information in part A of form GST E W B one may be furnished by such e-commerce operator. Or courier agency proviso to rule one thirty eight seven. This proviso is not yet effective though. Okay, subtopic eight. Information submitted for E-way bill can be used for filing GST returns. The information furnished in part A of the E-way bill shall be made available to the registered supplier on the common portal. Who may utilize the same for furnishing details in form G S T R one. Okay, this is again an administrative convenience. So you don't have to keep entering the same details multiple times. This will expedite the time that it will take you to. Finish this form G S T R one. Okay, however. When the information has been furnished by an an unregistered supplier or unregistered recipient, he shall be informed electronically. In the if the mobile number or the email is available proviso to rule one thirty eight sub rule eight. Next, cancellation of E-way bill. Where an E-way bill has been generated but goods are either not transported. Or are not transported as per the details furnished in the E-way bill. The E-way bill may be canceled electronically on the common portal within twenty four hours of generation of the E-way bill. Rule one thirty eight nine. However, an E-way bill cannot be canceled if it has been verified in transit. In accordance with the provisions of rule one thirty eight B. So after you have commenced the journey and it has been verified in transit and then you cannot. Cancel the E-way bill. Okay, first proviso to rule one thirty eight nine. Further. Unique E-way bill generated is valid for a fif for a period of fifteen days for update of part B. Second proviso to rule one thirty eight sub rule nine. So cancellation. Okay, so we had completed today's revision part. So this is done round three of. Page number nine to fifteen is done. Tomorrow we will do page number sixteen to nineteen, round three revision. Now let me go to. The new pages that whatever we are going to study round one. Let us read have some fresh reading now. Page number two point one one, page number eleven to page number fifteen or page number sixteen. Let me open. Supply under GST. Okay, let us start with analysis. In case you are joining for the first time, we had actually. Read the first ten pages of this chapter, contained a lot of twisty, lot of packed definitions. So. We have done two readings of the same. Some definitions we were able to understand very clearly, some definitions were extremely packed and it needs a lot of. Explanation. So let us proceed with that. So we will see the analysis part by the time we read this. I think those definitions would also become clear. Let's start. The definition of supply as contained in section seven is an inclusive definition. And does not define the term exhaustively, okay. It defines the scope of supply in an inclusive manner. Class A of subsection one illustrates the forms of supply, but the list is not exhaustive. This is further substantiated. By the use of words such as in the definition. Okay, provisions of scope of supply under CGST have also been made applicable to IGST while section twenty of the IGST act. Okay. The meaning and scope of supply in terms of section seven can be understood in terms of the following parameters. Supply should be of goods or services, supply should be made for a consideration. Supply should be made in the course or furtherance of business. Okay. Next. Aforeset parameters describe the concept of supply. However, there are few exceptions to second and third parameters. The requirement of supply being made for a consideration and in the course or furtherance of business in the GST law. Looks like there are. Certain exam exceptions to these two segments. Okay. Few exceptions have been carved out where a transaction is deemed to be a supply even without consideration. Contained in schedule one discussed later in this chapter. Similarly, the condition of supply to be made in the course or furtherance of business. Has been relaxed in case of import of services. Import of services for a consideration whether or not in the course of. Or furtherance of business is treated as supply. Okay. So import of goods is still treated as supply but import of services for a consideration is not treated as supply even though. It falls within the parameter number three. Further, there are also cases where a transaction is kept out of scope of supply despite the existence of the above parameters. That is, there is a list of activities which are neither treated as a supply of goods nor as supply of services. In other words, they are outside the scope of GST. GST law has classified certain activities or transactions either as supply of goods or as supply of services. Government is also empowered to notify transactions that are to be treated as supply of goods and not as supply of services. Or as a supply of service and not as a play of goods. In the subsequent paragraphs, the above aspects of supply have been extensively discussed. The discussion has been broadly categorized into following. Okay, now what does supply include and what does supply exclude? Supply includes supply of goods or services for consideration in the course or furtherance of business. Supply includes activities or transaction between a person other than an individual and its members or constituents for cash. Deferred payment or other valuable consideration. Supply also includes importation of services for consideration whether or not in course or furtherance of business. Supply. Includes supply without consideration. Okay, but supply excludes non-supplies under GST. Okay. Supply excludes activities to be treated as supply of goods or supply of services section seven subsection one A and. Clubbed with schedule two. Okay, this first segment has a some uh you know some clarification. Supply of goods or services in consideration in course of furtherance of business. Supply should be of goods or services or both. Supply includes specified forms of supply should be for consideration and should be. Okay, there's this consideration part is pretty essential. There has to be a monetary consideration from one party to another party. So that has to be there. So that is like a core element of getting whether something judged as a supply or not. Forms of supply consideration and in course or furtherance of business. Okay, let us start with. Supply of goods or services for consideration in course or furtherance of business. Supply should be of goods or services or both. The definition of supply begins with the term supply includes, thus making it clear that CGST intends to give an extensive meaning. To the term supply. Okay. Supply includes all forms of supply of goods or services or both. Supply of anything other than goods or services like money securities does not attract GST. Okay, so this is the first thing, money securities. They do not attract GST. Okay, so this is the first thing, money securities, they do not attract G S T. Goods or services, anything which is neither goods nor services, it's not supply money securities, et cetera. The term goods and services as defined under the act have been analyzed by way of a diagram on the next page. Anything supplied other than goods or services is outside the scope of supply. Now let us understand what is mean by goods and what is mean by services. Every kind of mobile property, it includes actionable claim, growing crops, grass and things attached to or forming part of the land which are agreed to be severed before supply or under a contract of supply, so goods means every kind of mobile property and it also includes actionable claim. And it also includes growing crops, grass which are attached to earth but they will be disconnected from the earth to finish the supply. Okay, services means anything other than goods, okay. But goods also exclude and services also exclude money and securities. Services include what activities relating to use of money or conversion of money by cash by any other mode. From one form or currency denomination to another for, another for, for which a separate consideration chart, so money is not covered under goods, but money exchange services is still considered as a supply, so it is still considered as a service, proper service, so therefore it will be considered as supply only. Supply includes specified forms of supply should be for consideration and should be in course or furtherance of business. The first part of section seven, clause A of subsection one includes all forms of supply of goods or services or both such as sale, transfer, barter, exchange, license rental, lease or disposal made or agreed to be made for consideration in the course or furtherance of business. So forms of supply, so anything that can you name in any verb, any sort of thing, any way you do a commerce. Then you, you fall under the scope of supply, it will be considered as one of the forms of supply. And there has to be consideration and it has to be in the course or furtherance of business. It is important to note that supply includes all forms of supply within its purview. Though eight illustrative forms of supply have been enlisted in the definition, so they, they give you a broad idea of like how all supply can happen, but they are saying it also is not restrictive. Even if something happens beyond the said eight points, it will still be deemed as supply. They are saying these eight verbs are just eight illustrative forms, right? Further, supply as contemplated in the first part has two prerequisites. It should be for a consideration, it should be in the course or furtherance of business, okay. We shall first discuss the various forms of supply as illustrated in seven subsection one subsection A, clause A in detail. Forms of supply, various forms of supply contemplated in section seven subsection one clause A are sale, transfer, barter, exchange, license, rental, lease or disposal. These forms of supply are only illustrative and not exhaustive. However, none of these terms have been defined under the act. In order to understand their meaning, we have taken recourse to their dictionary meaning and otherwise or other ways and have explained them as follows, so let us see them one by one. Sale and transfer, the dictionary term of, the dictionary meaning of term sale is the act of selling specifically. The transfer of ownership and ownership of and title to property from one person to another person. So basically, sale is transfer of ownership of uh, title from one person, ownership and title of the property from one person to another person. As per the Sale of Goods Act nineteen thirty, a contract of sale of goods is a contract whereby the seller transfers or agrees to transfer the property of, property in goods to the buyer for a price. Further, the term transfer has been defined in the Black's Law Dictionary as to convey or remove from one place person etcetera to another, pass or hand over from one to another. Specifically to make over the possession or control of, okay. A shopkeeper sells a pen for rupees hundred to the buyer. After the sale, the pin belongs to the buyer and shopkeeper does not have any right on the pin, this is a transaction of sale, okay. A company transfers goods from its factory to the depot for sale purposes. This is transfer where the sale has not yet taken place, yes. Factory is also my place, depot is also my place, so it's like moving goods from one hand to another hand. But the goods are still with me only, I still have the title, I still have the ownership. Therefore, it is not considered as a sale, but transfer has taken place. Barter and exchange, the dictionary meaning of term barter is to exchange goods or services for other goods or services instead of using money. Black's Law Dictionary defines the term exchange as an act of giving or taking one thing for another, okay. While barter deals with a transaction which only includes an exchange of goods or services. Exchange may cover a situation where the goods are paid for partly in goods and partly in money. Where there is a barter of goods or services, same activity constitutes supply as well as consideration. When a new car worth rupees five lakh is purchased in exchange of an old car along with the monetary consideration of four lakhs paid for the set purchase, it is an exchange transaction. A doctor got his haircut from a barber and provides him medical consultancy in return. In this transaction, the doctor provided the medical consultancy services to the barber for which consideration was in the form of haircutting services provided by the barber. Similarly, the barber provided haircutting services to the doctor for which consideration was in the form of medical consultancy services provided by the doctor. Okay, so I hope we are pretty much to the end of today's session. We will stop with this page number sixteen. So from here, we will carry on uh, tomorrow. So looks like this supply definition itself will be going on for a while. So it will provide us a much, much, much better clarity from what we saw in the definition part. So I hope you stayed till here and I hope the session was useful to you, let me update, we completed till two point one six, round one done on the ninth of October. So the tracker sheet will tell us what is to be done in the future, so round two will be on tomorrow again. So tomorrow our plan will be, the tenth of October, the plan will be to study round three of page number sixteen to nineteen in E-way bill. And round two of page number eleven to sixteen in supply under G S T. And yes, tomorrow we will be able to study three to four extra pages. After we have completed these two uh, things first. I will see you tomorrow, thank you for joining today, I hope the session was useful, let me know in the comment section below your thoughts, how the sessions, uh, sessions are going and um, is there any room for improvement, do let me know in the comment section below, thank you, thank you so much, I'll see you tomorrow, bye bye.